Okay, seven o'clock, we'll call the board of the meeting of the zoning board of review. Uh, for Tuesday, February eighth, twenty twenty-two, uh, roll call, please.
Robert Nigerian.
Here.
Scott Martin.
Here.
Paul Pastorello.
Yeah.
Michael Amafatano.
Here.
Vinnie Marcantonio. He's here, um.
Yeah, he's online.
Yep. Gail Denomi.
Yeah.
And Christopher DeZiel.
Here, thank you.
Thank you.
Item two is disclosure of no compensation or pension credits received by board members. So, as we always note, all members are appointed by the council and serve voluntarily. Item four is disclosure and notice. The zoning board of review members shall disclose any expedited communications about any contested or material due to the threat of fact or opinions concerning the merits of any application to work with us on the board review. And, uh, again, we have not, no members have disclosed such communications. Uh, item four. Approval of the minutes of from January twenty-fifth meeting. Uh, they did go out this afternoon, but I believe that they weren't elaborate. Uh, the only corrections I did note again is on the first two items. It says, Mr. Martin. A disclosure, so technically it should be me.
Okay, I'll fix it.
We don't need to, we can just amend it and prove it as amended, but through the record, just change that to either my name or Mr. Chairman, whatever it is you want to use.
Okay.
Uh, are there any other corrections or additions? Are hearing done or motions what's up?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Pastorello the second, Mr. Martin, all those in favor? Hi, both. Minutes passed. Okay, um, item. Item five is an omission or error. Um, the development area decision was already approved. It was supposed to be, uh, the zoning official sent all of you an email indicating that there was a mistake made. Uh, it was, the agenda was supposed to read the approval of the RTM realty decision. But of course, since the agenda was posted, uh, changed it, well, it just became an error. So, as Carrie Anderson had noted to all of you, uh, we might as well take a moment to resolve that. Uh, he indicated by email that, uh, he wanted to go with two twenty-two. I'm out of town that week, I asked him if we could continue it. He said the hall, this hall is available on three one. Um, can everybody make three one? He also noted in his email to us that the governor's order expires on three four. Uh, all that would mean is it would have back-to-back meetings, which is unheard of. I mean, normally we do every other, but we could still keep three eight, uh, for a dimensional variance that we don't have to go out there. About. So, the real question now is if we can agree on three one.
That's fine, I'm going to read it to you.
All the members. Uh, Vinnie, are you okay for March first? Anything, Carl?
I, I muted, I'm just trying to unmute.
He, I don't know, I didn't, we'll do it, but we have the majority anyway, so. Okay, so, uh, Carrie is listening, so we, is everybody okay with three one and three eight?
Yes.
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 Three eight may be difficult for me, I'm not sure yet.
Okay, um.
Just want to give everybody a heads up, because we're discussing it.
Three eight meeting is a dimensional variance. I assume what we could do is we could have the elections on three one, everything we were able to propose to do on twenty-two, we could do on three one. Three eight would be a dimensional variance. When will you know? That's a regularly scheduled, right? So.
I'll send it to them, I'll confirm it.
Here, will you make it again when the next day?
Yes.
Okay, so hopefully, um, but I'll leave it with Carrie. It's a regularly scheduled meeting, so we probably should still book it. So, it'd be more important to know whether or not you'll be able to join us. Uh, Carrie, are you there? Again?
No, hold on, he's dialing in too.
Okay. But we don't have to wait, I guess, we can continue, all we're going to tell them is that, uh.
He's on now.
Okay, Carrie, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, we, the board was all in agreement that, uh, we can move two twenty-two to three one.
Oh, okay, so we will, we will have a appropriate quorum?
Correct, yeah, all members were in agreement. Now, three eight is a regularly scheduled meeting on our calendar?
Three eight is a regularly scheduled meeting and I'm working with a applicant on a dimensional variance.
Okay, and then we noted the email you sent, so the only member that may not be available is Paul Pastorello, but if because it's a regularly scheduled meeting, if the applicant is available, we should book it. And Paul will get back to you shortly in a day or two to confirm whether he'll be available.
Okay, sounds good.
Oh, that's right, and the other thing we have to do, Carl, then is, uh, Carrie, if we don't hear from Vinnie, we'll try to get, Vinnie's going to have to open up his mic at some point to vote, so we'll confirm Vinnie for three eight as well. We have a forum for three one, but we'll confirm Vinnie for three eight. If neither of them can make it, then, you know, we'll have to adjust, but we'll still have time, so either way, I mean, we should go with three eight, but we'll, we'll wait to hear from Vinnie as well, but both names seem to be fine at this point.
Okay.
Thank you, okay, so that is just last.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, is the stenographer with us?
Uh, online.
Okay, good.
Okay, we'll go to item six, which is the continuance of the application of Wayne Oil, fifty-nine School Street, uh, to build an effect garage, dwelling at fifty-nine School Street. Uh, applicant seeks relief from section four point four for non-conforming structures. Letter, subletter A, and five point five point one residential district conventional regulations side yard setbacks and R U district. So. We had, uh. We had been almost complete with this application. Um, we had asked, uh, the applicant, um. Just Doyle and Oil, and he, those places are up to a hundred days, he put it through states at the fourteen-foot mark, which hopefully a lot of members, as they go by the house, do, you know, get a better feel for what the magnitude of the change would be. Um, and I think, I believe we left, uh, we hadn't gone into deliberation, I believe we left, still open the applicant's, uh, ability to present, and I think we, I don't know if we did or didn't close. I think we closed public comment, but, uh, is, man, are you here to speak? Okay, um, so we, there would be no members of the public here, Carl correctly, but, uh, those in attendance by Zoom are, can't, can't participate, they can only observe.
No, they can participate, they can, but there's, there's nobody from the public, it's, everybody has business with the board.
Alright, so we're back to that condition where public can, can engage on Zoom, but we have no. Okay, so what we can do is, do we need to refresh any members, memories on what we looked at? Um, uh, we still do have more, uh, open for the applicant. Uh, I'll leave it open, uh, for a few moments, if members have any questions based on whether they did or didn't drive by and they had any questions for the applicant. And Mr. Amafatano is excluded, not recused, but he wasn't in attendance at the first meeting, so he, we won't be able to vote. Right, does anyone have specific questions for the applicant? Okay, um, so do you have anything you'd like to add to what you gave us before? Okay, so that being said, we'll close. Uh, the, the aspect part of the meeting that deals with the applicant's, uh, presentation?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Alright.
Okay, so now we, we'll, you know, we'll go into deliberation. Um, as I noted to, as I noted to you, the, um, when we look at all of what we have to do, um. Essentially covered by nine point three in the zoning ordinance board, it lists, there are some categories that must substantiate, our, our decision must be based on answering those questions in a, in a, in a direct way, so. I, I still kind of am where I am, um, with regard to what I saw. Uh, the fourteen-foot stakes were helpful in the, you know, blizzard shortly thereafter, but they were still visible, so they can see them today as well. Um, I did what, uh, Chris DeZiel did when he mentioned that, you know, this is the second time I drove around the cul-de-sac of Hallowell or the loop of Hallowell. And really it appeared to me that all of the homes were fairly typical in size. Uh, they all had single garages, some little bit bigger than others, both the garage and the house, but all of the, all of the properties were similar in that regard, I saw no two-car garage buildings. So, what I'll do is what I usually do, I'll go through the points. Uh, I'll, I'll read what my thoughts are, and the numbers can add to that accordingly. So, nine point three point one A, that the hardship for which the applicant seeks relief is due to the unique characteristics of the subject land and, oh, the subject land or structure, and not to the general characteristics of the surrounding area, and is not due to a physical or economic disability of the applicant. Um, and as we know, because of, because of the four point four criteria, um, this is a non-conforming structure. Uh, as to the dimensional setback, you can see on the plot plan that, I believe it's a violation as a precondition, pre-existing condition in two locations, and, and what further magnifies it is that the requested relief is in the same direction as the current non-conformity. So, it magnifies, uh, directly what four point four speaks to, which is that the zoning ordinance does not wish, uh, to magnify or increase the size of a non-conformity. Uh, there doesn't appear to be any physical economic disability of the applicant. The applicant, however, has identified that their hardship is just a desire for additional garage space. Um, and, and, like, I did reference the Ryland zoning cantile, which indicated that in and of itself, uh, that's, that's not truly a hardship, a desire for additional parking on an existing house lot. It's not hardship, it's a desire, it isn't being justified, but in the eyes of the zoning book, you know, zoning rules and regulations, it's, it's not truly a hardship. Um, and it also notes that, you know, as we know here, not to the general characteristics of the surrounding area, I just noted that when I go around, it appears to me that the subject land is, uh, is not unique to the subject, uh, surrounding characteristics of the surrounding area, I mean, if that lot, if that round of lot was a two-family or a very large, single-family with multiple garages, and then you have this one, then you could say, well, that, that is very unique, but it's not unique in that everything else around it is fairly typical in that regard. So, the subject land doesn't appear to be any different from the other properties of immediate area. Uh, any comments by membership in that regard?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, a comment. Um, I, I kind of, you know, I hate to take an opposite opinion, but the hardship, I think the hardship is caused by the fact that this applicant didn't build this house.
Right.
And it, it was built in a way that was pleasing to, to planning, because if it was built in the, in the sidelines, uh, that should have been, it would have, it would have looked awkward on that corner. And then, if I, I could be wrong, this Carrie, if you could correct me, but when this house was constructed, the side setback was only fifteen feet. Is that true?
Uh, I, I think he, he carried it by the book, but I, I don't know that that's relevant, because the, the zoning is what it is.
No, but I.
Doesn't create it, because if you, just by definition of what you're saying for hardship, if you use that definition, then, as I noted in the first meeting, every property in this town, every other town that predated the zoning map would be considered a hardship, because there are non-conforming properties in every community and, and virtually every state that has zoning.
That's true.
Because the overlay created it, so it is not any reflection on the previous owner, the current owner, or any future owner, it's just a reflection on the fact that that property doesn't comply with the, the setback.
No, I understand that, but it's true that that hardship was not created by this applicant, you know, that the, the zoning was created after this house was built, so therefore that creates the hardship. And even Chase in, in the zoning manual allows us discretion just on that fact alone.
Yeah, but again, I think the issue is hardship is not a function of the non-conformity, because the relief that's being requested goes way beyond, you know, if, if you could argue, Paul, and like I, I was trying to argue that way, if the relief that was requested was on the opposite side, and was away from the non-conformity, you know, it would be more compelling argument to say, oh, okay, but if the relief is granted, you have less than four feet on the side yard, so you took a non-conformity and you magnified.
More or less against it.
Specifically indicated that, and of course, yes, the very nature of applying current variance allows the board to grant whatever relief it wants. So, it just becomes a discretionary decision on each member of you. Your point is your point, dude, but I don't believe it's the definition of hardship, because it's an existing condition. And it's, and it, and it is, we don't, can't say with certainty that any other property in that cul-de-sac isn't also non-conforming. We, we can't hold it against the applicant, and we can't hold it in favor of the applicant, because we don't know. And that's not relevant, because that information isn't from us, so. Any other comments or additions to that nine point three point one A?
The only official point that I would make, uh, to your point, your point, Mr. Chairman, is that the driveway is configured in such a way that the existing garage, uh, can be utilized on feet, and he can still park an additional vehicle. He just wants a vehicle parked in stock.
No, that's a good point, because you can see the same area in the back line, you know. Any other members with questions? Okay, we'll move on to, again, I'll go to item B, so nine point three point one D. That the hardship is not the result of any prior action of the applicant, that was not revoked primarily from the designer, the applicant realized for any financial gain. Uh, my notes are that, I think all members would agree that, that both are true, this is not, and your point exactly was Pastorello, that clearly, uh, there was no prior action by the applicant, and we all know that it's his house, and therefore there's probably no issue of financial gain, it's not like this is a second home or a second being of an income property or additional rental care. Item, uh, nine point three point one C. That granting the, that the granting of the requested variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance or the comprehensive plan upon which this ordinance is based. My notes from previously, and then when I go by today, just to start the discussion, is that, uh, we all know that the address has fronted on Main Street, which is, you know, one of the major roads in town. Uh, different than Iron Mine and some of the other, uh, addresses where, again, I indicated there is no such thing as precedent, but as I noted, as an example, when we granted similar type relief on Iron Mine, I believe it was, uh, all of the land between the two properties, the two existing homes was, was hilly and completely forested, so no one would be able to ascertain or guess where the property line was, where the setback line was. So, that made that a little bit, uh, more appealing as to the ability of the board to act with us and, and grant the relief. In this instance, we have well-land, clear, unobstructed from the, the butter to the right. And, and I would note that there was some discussion that, you know, I think we all realize that it's really not relevant that the house is occupied, unoccupied, for ten years, one day, because it's the person that would live there wherever. Uh, that, so it's not really relevant that we can say because the house is unoccupied, that therefore it would be less truthful, truth and crucified if we granted it. Uh, increasing the length of the structure toward the butter will certainly alter the general character of the surrounding area, I don't know that I saw too many houses where it looked like you had any infringement or encroachment. Uh, and we know that the ordinance post reside unit setback is twenty. It's already a violation, and in the back corner, um, uh, and we know that in order for the applicant to build what he, he believes he needs, uh, we, we were left, were left with less than five feet in, in the back corner. Um. And again, as I noted, even though this board guest always has the right to do as it sees fit, the ordinance clearly indicates that it prefers that we not expand on a non-conformity. Uh, so that's, those are the starting points, so members, would you, uh, to add to that?
It would expand a non-conforming.
So is that?
Expand a non-conforming lot.
Got it, I understand.
It's, it's just, uh, it, yeah, it's just background noise.
Oh, okay, thank you. Uh, anything else on, on, on that subsection? Item D, which is nine, item D, which is nine point three point one D, that the relief to be granted is the least relief necessary. Uh, we, we did indicate, um, that clearly the fourteen feet in width appears to be the least relief when you, when you figure a nine-foot wide garage door, uh, and the ability to open both doors, you know, fourteen feet gives you that pretty quick. Uh, we do know that, you know, while we're talking just for a while, and just by looking at it, that the existing end wall, the gable end wall, is a low bearing, obviously, because it's, uh, it's picking up the end of the house, so you can't just, he, he could, working with a building official, he could put a structural header and, and make it, uh, so that you could access directly into there for more than just the passenger. The twenty-five feet, you know, was in question, you know, the twenty-four feet, I'm sorry, which is what's shown on the plot plan had been a question, uh, of mine at the time, uh, we didn't really, uh, address that too much. Um, I have, but we did close the applicant's communication, uh, so we could reopen in this evening, but, you know, the twenty-four foot depth, um, might mitigate if it was reduced. Um. And, and, you know, the other thing that, you know, when you think about it, if you measure the width of the house, the total length of the house, it's about fifty-six feet based on the scale.
The only thing I would say about that is the gym, isn't it, that's because I know that my garage is twenty-four feet deep. It's not as deep as you think, I have the SUV, and I can barely put my garbage cans behind my CD or my parking.
So, with a pickup truck, that would seem losing.
Right.
But, alright, and I was, I was leaning in that direction, but we've gotten some feedback, so, you know. So, we do feel that it is the least relief necessary based on the fourteen and the size of the vehicle that would be proposed to park there. Anything else on the subsection D? Okay, moving on to subsection E. That granting the variance requested will not confer on, on the applicant, onto the applicant any special privilege that is denied by this ordinance to other land structures or buildings in the same district. Um. You know, we, we have to deal with this subsection on every variance, and of course, clearly, virtually every variance by definition near granting a special privilege. So, we always have to weigh, what, what does that truly mean? Um, and, and my only talking point is that we granting over dimensional variance of, you know, almost more than seventy-five percent of the replied setback, one from twenty to five, literally less than five, uh, would confer, uh, on the applicant a special privilege that is denied to a lot of the land structures or buildings in the same district, because again, when we drive around that immediate cul-de-sac of Hallowell, uh, you know, we, Hallowell Street, we look at, we see that, or I looked and I saw that, uh, this general form, yes, the size, that's the size of the garage, that's the size of the lot, that's the size of the structure, so. Uh, we have, I want to know, do, uh, any? Any comments?
I do, I have one. I have one, you're actually talking about Hallowell Drive. And right across. Right across. Of, of Hallowell, there are non-conforming lots. And if you look at those houses, when you drive by, they're a brand new, I'm not going to say brand new, but they're in new additions. Um, I don't know how, if it was before Carrie, but there are additional varieties on here.
Well, Hallowell, he, he, I'm just referring to, I know it says drive, but the plan sits street, so I saw street, and I said street. So, you mean that they're on Hallowell Drive or on School Street?
I'm going to say School Street, but it is on the corner of Hallowell Drive and School Street. He does have a non-conforming lot, and he also has an attached garage. So, how can you say yes to this man and then kind of like, oh, well, you know, he doesn't look good around Hallowell Drive? Well, there are some sheds on Hallowell Drive that are bigger than, that I could put my Jeep in, so. You're going from a, a attached garage, which is fine, but then when you look at other non-conforming lots around there, they have an attached garage.
You know, the only thing I can say is that we don't know what we don't know.
I know, but then when we're looking around, we have to see what we're looking at.
Yeah, but you can't make the statement that we can tell by looking at a plot of the non-conformity, we, we don't have that authority. We really don't, I mean, you, you can, you can use it as your opinion and your basis to make a decision, but we, we can't say it appears that four of the five of the landing properties are non-conforming, because we don't have that legal, we don't have that information, and, and it's not relevant, because, I mean, it is in some respects, because everything is wide open as to general character, so you can argue in both ways, your point is, is taken.
Right.
Uh, in that regard, because, yeah, it's a fairly tight clustered cul-de-sac or loop, whatever you want to refer to it as. And it's a, it's a, I mean, frankly, for me, what makes this difficult for me is that the corruption is on School Street. And then, even though we have no authority architecturally, um, I, 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 I also have an issue architecturally with what that structure would look like. If this was on Hallowell Drive, I, you know, members may have a different, uh, but my, my concern is that it's, it's fronted on a main road, uh, and it would be very clear that this was, you, you can see the fence clearly is intended to define the property line, and if you, if you build the garage, you're going to clearly see that it's, architecturally, it's going to be out of bounds. And if you, if you build the garage, you're gonna clearly see that it's architecturally, it's gonna be out of bounds. Uh, almost more than a half or a third of the house is gonna be garage, first residence, so. You know, that's why this one, I think, is so difficult for all members, so the point's well taken in that regard, but. We also have to be careful. What we base our decision on, we can't assume what we don't know to be true, even though we may believe it to be that way. Each individual can vote that way, so as usual, you know, we can. So. Anything else on that, on that separate category, the uh, subsection E? Here and now, go to nine point three point two, which really isn't applicable, this applies to a used variance. I don't need to be, it doesn't matter, we're not. Uh, Mr. Hoyle is not applying for each variant, so therefore, it's not available. Uh, nine point three point two B is the last criteria. He granting a dimensional variance is a hardship that will be suffered by the owner of the subject property if the dimensional variance is granted. Shall amount to more than a mere inconvenience, which shall mean that there is no other reasonable alternative. To enjoy legally permitted beneficial use of one's property. The fact that use may be more profitable, or that a structure may be more, may be. Valuable after the relief is granted shall not be grounds for relief, um. Uh, I mean, I think this one really. Quite clear, uh, and as I noted, um. You know, the Rhode Island zoning act book, which is a public project. They have every right to use and research, and that's why it was written, very clearly indicates that the spirit of court has found that. So. The need for additional parking or garage, it specifically says that. Is not considered, does not rise above the threshold of near inconvenience. So in the court's eyes, in previous cases, they they indicate that the need for additional garage is. A near inconvenience, not more than it is. And the other thing that's quite clear, and again, we deal with this every time, so we can look at it both ways. But it's quite clear that there is a reasonable alternative. But it's a house, it's been occupied since it was built, and it will be occupied whether the relief is granted or not. So it was clearly established that. There is, quote, a, a reasonable alternative to enjoy a legally permitted beneficial use of the property. So, you know, we, when I look at all of the pluses and minuses, you know, that's, that's the last one. Any comments on subsection E? Okay, then, uh, I mean, we can have general discussion if members have, uh, things that they want to say prior to going to the vote. I mean, if you wanna, if you wanna just speak freely and summarize your opinions, uh, that's now's the opportunity to do it, if members would like to do that.
Well, I think they say what I, I think that, you know, just enforcing my belief is that this house was built. Before zoning came out, um. Mr. Hoyle's been in the town for a very long time, you know, well-respected taxpayer, um. I think it does speak volumes that no one is in opposition to this, which is not only. We don't only give that the sole, um, passing or or not passing a, a, uh. Application, but that does get way, it has to at some point. So, you know, that being said, I I'd like to make a motion, my motion would be to approve this.
Well, we're not making a motion, just, yeah, we'll, we'll put a motion out, and I can always do, this was just for general comments, if members wanted to summarize their thoughts. Uh, anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just have a problem to come. And the problem is, is if you look at this application. You compare it to the item one, the, the other application that we did grant. There is one similarity that does help the applicant, which is that the. Uh, premises that's adjacent on School Street. Is set back further back from the, uh, uh, the street. Than this house, so there is some, uh. A decent amount of distance between the back corner of that proposed garage and. Not the property line, but the, the adjacent structure. Uh, the con, I guess, would be is, I think that you would have to. Saying that it's totally unimpeded with this direct site, there's no trees or shrubbery whatsoever. You would ask for some type of, of. Hedging, um. Uh, up to the garage, so it's blocked by the, the adjacent, but looking at that from the street, I'm just wondering. That would be wrong.
Okay, uh, Mr. Martin, uh, Gail, have anything? Okay, anyone else? Um. Okay, well. I I guess you could elaborate a little bit on your, your, uh, everybody, if you will, uh, thought. Whether or not I would make it more palatable, but, you know. Where do you stop with everybody, you go all the way back to the shed, or, you know, um.
Mr. Chairman, my thing is add the everybody, you're really gonna have a problem with that. Non-conforming lot, you know, those everybody's are gonna grow right into the garage.
Seven four feet and you can't put them on the line.
No.
Yeah, yeah, uh, and even if you put a low hedge of some sort, it needs to be maintained. Four feet, you can barely get a lawn mower, you know, back there between it, so. Okay, I mean, you know, my summarization is that this is more difficult than, um. That I would like it to be, because I, I think the board is always trying to. I hope you kind of appreciate Mr. Hoyle, that we're trying to be as serious as we can. Uh, sometimes applicants comment and it feels very self-serving argument, and they want, they want, and they can't seem to grasp. But, you know, we are supposed to be pragmatic about everyone. And there is no precedent from any, any lawyer will tell you that you can't use precedent because each event is a different thing. If we use precedent, then there will be, we wouldn't even sit here about it, anyone else, you could just do our bad, and say, well, we granted that, so just. This one, um, I think it just comes down to, uh, uh, decisions by the members as to. Which direction and, uh, you know, I I I'm still leaning towards, the majority of the criteria. Is to the negative. And what magnifies it to me is that we're expanding in the direction of the non-conformity. To, you know, less than five feet from the property line, on a main road with a primary exposure. With an architecturally challenging design, because you've got a rake extension where the roof extends, you see it in the picture. And you're gonna have to interact with that, and then you're gonna have to change the roof slope, and even though architectural. Uh, decisions are not relevant to us, plays into, we have so many subjective, open-ended areas where we can. Drift left and drift right, almost anything is open to reasonable discourse. And I think reasonable discourse also includes the architectural integrity, uh. Uh, well, may or may not, that will take whatever it will to put what would look nice. And and there would be nobody that could tell him that he couldn't do it, but yet it would impact the visual on the street, so. You know, this is gonna be a difficult one, um, but I guess at this point, we can bring it to a vote, uh, just to confirm, uh. Carl, it's, uh, four is needed for, uh.
Four, four out of five.
Four out of five, okay. Um, uh, Mr. Martin, I don't know if you can, if you wanna. Then again, the resolutions and the motions are always made in the affirmative, and we should both take favor of or against.
I move to approve the application by Wayne Hoyle of fifty-nine School Street, North Smithfield, Rhode Island. Built with attached or attached to the single-family dwelling, fifty-nine School Street, North Smithfield. The applicant seeks relief from section four point four, non-conforming structures. Letter A in five point five point one, residential district, dimensional red dimensions, side yard setbacks for an arming district. Oh, they're, they're called that, but the Z R two one. I move to approve the application number Z R two two one, by Wayne Hoyle of fifty-nine School Street, North Smithfield, Rhode Island. To build an attached garage to the single-family dwelling at fifty-nine School Street, North Smithfield, Rhode Island. The applicant is seeking relief from section four point four of the zoning ordinance. No non-conforming structures, letter A, and five point five point one residential district, dimensional red correction. Side yard setbacks for an arming district.
Thank you, do you have a second? Also, Heather.
Mr. Chairman, just one, just one second, Heather, are you hearing that okay?
I need to know who made the second, please.
Yeah, we were trying to just to differentiate that, hold on one moment, who wants it, Mr. Martin or Mr.? We'll give it to Mr. DeZiel with the second.
Uh, one, one point of order, uh, it should be a voting member that seconds.
So I'll second it.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I had my mistake, so Mr. Martin will second that, sorry, that I had a mistake. All right, we'll have a roll call vote again.
Hi, uh, Robert Nigerian.
No.
Scott Martin.
No.
Paul Pascarello.
Yes.
Um, Vinnie Marcantonio.
Just trying to get him to unmute. Yeah, there he goes.
Okay, you gotta say it now.
Did I hear that? Did that vote come through?
Uh, he he's unmuted, he can, uh, vote.
Uh, Vinnie, can you vote on the, on the motion, please?
Vote on the motion.
What, what was that? Is it a matter of yes or a no?
Say yes or no.
What's the motion?
But if he'll prove it.
Oh.
The motion is to approve it, Vinnie, is it a yes or a no?
Yeah, I would approve it with stipulations.
Well, it's too late for the stipulation, we have to vote on the voting.
So therefore, it'd be a no.
Okay. Then you can continue.
Um, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, okay, never mind, I I assume another motion could be made with stipulations after this motion.
Okay, yeah, we'll return to it, okay. Why don't we finish the vote on this motion?
Gail Denomey?
Yeah.
And that's, that's five.
Uh, what about the Mr. DeZiel?
I, it was five, though, right?
No, my, uh, Mr. Martin has to recuse himself, or, or, he's not eligible to vote. So how many members were present, so we have? One, two, three, four. Chris is the, Chris is the alternate, but, okay, all right, so what's the tally?
That would be five.
Now, what's the total vote, uh, yea and nay?
Oh, um, four nos, one yes.
That's right, now, that's, 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 that's correct, it should be three, it's. Uh, Gail Denomey and Mr. Pat, and then Paul Pascarello voted in favor, and the other three members voted against. Uh, then you concur with that, everyone?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's three to two. So that would mean that the motion, fair. Uh, two in favor, uh, gee, yes, that's correct, two in favor and three against. Okay, um. I guess, uh, Mr. Gail is either solicitor, or are you indicating that if Mr. Mark Antonio wanted to make a second motion, you could?
Yeah, anybody, if if there's no motion that passed, anybody can make any additional motions they want. Uh, as part of the trend, and so the, uh, Mr. Mark Antonio has indicated that. He would make a motion or support a motion in favor with stipulations, certainly the board can consider that.
Yes, of course, so Vinnie, are you there? Can you clarify and indicate what your, um, conditions would be? And if we can get a second, then we would be happy to, uh, vote on a second motion.
Tell him this. Tell him.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I I have a question before, uh, I can't hear that well where I'm at. The neighbors next door, were they against it or for it?
Uh, we've had nobody other than one of us, Mr. Vader, Steven Vader. He was here at the previous meeting, and he lives to the rear of the property, and he was in favor. There was nobody present tonight.
Okay. If if they're in favor, I own property in an IU district in town. And a lot of properties are very, very, very close, uh, to five foot, ten foot. You know, th- there's no reason they couldn't move that garage, or they could make it, uh, go up a little bit with it. If you wanna stay within the five-foot range, or they could make it shorter, twenty-two feet, so they have the five-foot range. Uh, off the property line, there's many, many properties in IU's, uh, town, especially in Union Village. That are just five feet off the properties, and, um, you know. I just wanted, didn't know that.
Yeah, but what would your, if you wanted to make a condition to a motion, a new motion, what would you say you would? Be, it seemed, it appeared that you said you'd be in favor if under certain conditions, and what were those conditions?
Let him move it.
Hmm?
Let's see, know what the conditions would be.
Well, I would make it, I would make it twenty-two feet. So I'd be more, I'd be at at least five feet off that property. Or I would move the whole thing up a little bit, so it'd even be more than five feet off the property.
Mr. Chairman, um, do you understand, uh, if he's, if you look at the map, what? Mr. Mark Antonio is speaking to, I don't mean to interrupt, but I. I'm looking at the map, and I think I understand what he's talking about, I don't know if the board does.
Yeah, you can see that the, at its nearest point, at the rear, it's four point eight one feet. Uh, remaining to the property line, um.
Right, if you.
The, this goes to the discussion that I entertained at the beginning, which was the depth of twenty-four feet. You know, um, whether that was. Whether that was, uh. A mandatory or, or, you know, whether that could be changed, um. I I imagine in fairness, the only way that if board members wanted to entertain this, uh, Mr. Solicitor, if you give us the direction. If we needed to, we could reopen discussion with the applicant to ask him if he would even be willing to accept the twenty-two foot long garage.
Right, uh, Mr. Chairman, I I I think the board should at least consider that possibility. There is one other, I think, Mr. Mark Antonio, I was listening to Mr. Mark Antonio and looking at. The map, now, I was not here for the first meeting, and I'm not sure if the proposed garage. Is separate from the existing garage, or it's part of it, but let's assume it's separate. I think Mr. Mark Antonio is saying, if you push the whole garage towards the street.
Well, to clarify, on the plot plan, the front of the building is at thirty-two point eight six feet. The front setback is twenty-five.
So if you say you have.
The proposed garage is attached to the building and is a continuation of the front elevation.
Uh, I I I understand, I, but I, Mr. Mark Antonio's given two choices, he's saying, either reduce the garage by two feet. In the back to twenty-two, or you could slide the garage up. And still be respectful of the twenty-five feet, and and I don't wanna speak for Mr. Mark Antonio, but I'm looking at the map when he said it, and.
He said it moving forward and the short transit, right?
No, either or. Either or, if the applicant is willing to entertain one of those two, or.
Oh, no, I I understand that, I just wish this had been brought during. Uh, during our discussion, and we could have engaged him in that regard, so. Uh, we'll do whatever, you're here to tell us what's the legal, uh, the proper legal thing to do. If we want to, given that the initial motion was in the negative. Um, and if we, uh, if members do want to revisit. And converse with the applicant, uh, could you please give us directions, do we need to take a second motion to reopen?
Yeah, well, you could do one of two things, you can make a motion, I would make, I would have someone in the, in the affirmative. Make a motion to reconsider.
Yep, no, I understand, I just wanted to make.
And make, and that, and that gets me. And that gets made by someone in the affirmative, anyone can second it. And if that passes, and I only need the majority vote, then we could entertain the discussion.
Okay, well, why don't we take a moment? You know, as I stressed all along, our intent here is to try to always do what we believe is right. So if either of the two members who voted in the affirmative would like to make a motion to reconsider, please go ahead and do so.
No, it has to be the people who voted, who won the motion.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. They voted in the negative then, because the motion is in the affirmative. So any of the three members, I'm sorry. Any of the three members who voted in the negative against the motion can, if they so desire, can make a motion now to reconsider. Either the other two members willing to do that. Vinnie voted, well, Vinnie would have to say that. Can you move any to reconsider?
Can you move to reconsider?
Yeah, I'll move to reconsider.
Okay, so Mr. Marcantonio has voted against the decision initially. He moves to reconsider. Any member can second. So we have that. Why don't we have a, we just need a majority vote?
Yeah, just a majority vote.
Okay, all those in favor, aye. All those opposed. Okay, so now we're going to reconsider, and I'm assuming Mr., for the solicitor, and obviously we need to reopen the applicant's comments, so he can converse with us freely. Do you agree?
I would agree. Give the applicant a chance to weigh in.
Okay, so before we do that, Mr. Boyle, why don't we just... No, hold on, let's just flush this out as to what it is, so we don't go around suspending the applicant. We're going to open it up and you'll have freedom to talk and we'll engage you. But I think what we should do is take just a moment to look at the site plan in consideration with what Mr. Marcantonio was indicating. You know, we have architectural implications. I don't think we have a front setback situation, because we've got twenty-five feet and we've got thirty-two existing. So the question would be, you know, from the whole issue here, the whole issue here is the non-conformity isn't going away. The whole issue here is, what is palatable for members if we change the 4.81? So that really should be what we're focusing on. And there's only two means by which we can change the 4.81. And that's the distance that's currently remaining between the closest point of the proposed garage and the property line. That would be either to reduce the total length from twenty-four to some other number or to, and/or in addition to push the structure, proposed garage closer to the street, which would put the front elevation of the garage at a different plane than the existing house. So is that a concise analysis of what we would consider? Okay, Mr. Martin, I did like to make a motion to reopen the applicant's presentation.
Excuse me, I would add something to that. If I understood Vinnie correctly, he's looking for a five foot minimal. So whatever it means of getting the five foot, either by shrinking the building or sliding it forward to achieve a five foot instead of a 4.81.
Well, that wasn't a motion, he just, he put that number out there. It would be, it would require a motion to be made, whether it's five foot or five foot six or whatever. So what we should do next is just just discuss with the applicant what he is willing to accept. So why don't we just go ahead and Mr. Martin make the motion?
We'll make a motion to open up the applicant's section.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll reopen. Mr. Boyle, if you'd like to come forward and remember, the stenographer is remote. So you just have to raise your right hand and look towards the screen and follow.
We're swearing in this witness, sir?
Yes, please.
Okay, sir, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony about to be given in this matter shall be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help God? Thank you, sir. Could you please state your full name for the record?
Wayne Bruce Boyle.
I'm sorry, sir, right into the microphone.
Just be right in the microphone, it's right in front of you.
Wayne, Wayne Boyle? Are we good? I assume we are. Okay, so you've heard the conversations back and forth. What do you, what can you accept?
I think it will look kind of strange, you've been bunked out.
That was my concern, yes. What vehicle are you, you said you had mentioned your pickup truck. What options do you have? How many vehicles, obviously you have more than one. So what do you park in the existing garage?
Oh, my wife's, her app pool.
Okay, and that's a smaller vehicle than the pickup truck, right? And will your pickup truck fit in the existing garage?
I never tried.
I never tried. So if I get you right, so what is the front to back dimension of your truck? Would twenty-two feet work, or are you not in a position to answer that?
It's a 2018 four-door silverado, six and a half foot thick. I don't know how with eighteen, twenty feet long.
Yeah, but let me ask you, how far back have you ever measured? The backside of your garage is the entryway to the rear of the house? Right?
No, it goes out to a porch.
So is the full width of the full depth of the house the existing garage?
No.
Okay.
There's a porch area on the back.
So you don't know what that dimension is, the inside dimension of your existing garage?
No, because I was going to go same length as the existing garage. And that would bring it right to the back of the porch.
Where the, just before the window? Where you said you were gonna, that window is part of, that window would go away.
Yes.
So you would stop at the fence that returns into the house, into the end wall of the house.
That fence, I would end up, I would end the garage at that fence.
Which is the back part of your current garage, sir?
Yes.
I don't know that, because you said... Well, is that where you came up with twenty-four feet?
Yes.
Oh, all right.
No.
Are you going to need to speak into a mic also that...
That garage will end where it was posted.
You're pointing to the fence post, that is at the wall.
Right.
But again, that's twenty-four feet to the left and then up. That doesn't, that doesn't alleviate the issue. And you would rather not project towards School Street? I mean, I agree with your note architecturally, it may look a bit odd.
Make the garage short.
So I could, you know, I could, you know, what do I need, twelve feet? Well, we don't know what you need. All a member has done is indicate that the member felt that they would be willing to change their vote if the 4.81 was closer to five feet. That's all we have. We're not giving you any assurance at any time. Just one member who voted against it indicated that if it was five feet or was more than five feet, he would be inclined to vote in favor.
No, I could, I could walk it up.
So what that means, Mr. Boyle, is that four point eight feet with five feet is, he did throw twenty-two feet for overall length, but point two feet to make it five is like three inches. So you'd have to either shrink the building by three inches to maintain that a five foot or, you know, distance between your property line, or you'd have to slide the building forward. How many other feet you want, you could go seven feet with our current zoning situation. Because you have, you have thirty-two feet, you have to maintain twenty-five feet from the front setback.
Can I ask you a question? Does the garage have to be attached? I mean, we did discuss that your payment, you know, extent. I don't know, if you spoke with the zoning official, and I don't think you could, you could, I don't know if you could put an accessory building and use it as a detached garage. I don't know if that would be worse or better, or even bleak. Because it's in the front, so I don't believe you can put it in the front. But you can't put it on the other side, because you're well in an excess of...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If it's going to be used as an accessory structure, detached, it would have to be at least ten feet away from any principal structure or other additional accessory structure on the property.
And what about the front yard setback? I forget what's an accessory structure, front yard.
No. Any accessory structure has to be in the side or rear yard.
That's what I thought. That's what I thought. So it's really not viable in this regard, it doesn't offer us a solution. Well, I think, you know, maybe what we should do, in terms of general discussion, you can stay up there if you'd like, you can say whichever one you like. Let's have a general discussion as to what the, you know, whether 4.81 or five foot or five foot two or five foot three, you know. Does any of that match? You know, Mr. Marcantonio has stated from his experience, that it's his opinion that there are multiple locations where, you know, it's five feet. I don't know where that number comes from, but that's what his assertion was, or is. What are members' opinions? Does five feet or five feet plus make any difference to those who voted against? Because that's what it comes down to.
And not to negative two, not to negative two.
Okay. So the, what this really comes down to is, I mean, we certainly can't... Yeah. But the discussion really should be on that back corner, and...
No, what's wrong with twenty-two?
We can grant, we can grant whatever we want to the applicant as to, he could push the building forward, it's on the board, it doesn't mean arable because of the climate season. You know. He's still not performing, so even pushing it forward, the structure is still not performing even when he pushes it forward. If he pushes it forward, but we could grant him the right to choose to push it forward. But I think you have to respect, if the landowner is indicating that he doesn't think his own house will look good if it's forward, then it's kind of silly for the board to grant him that, you know, to want to do it. So it really comes down to whether or not we offer to, given the authority to do this, a number other than 4.81. That's really, I don't see another way to look at this, is that a fair statement? This is what this is all about. So members should indicate, you know, what are you thinking? Are you thinking five point two feet?
Three and a half, what, three and a half feet make it?
What's in the back of the other garage? It looks like you have a room? It's a screened in porch?
Yes.
Okay, and that's behind the other...
That's behind the garage.
Thank you.
Okay, well, Vinnie, do you have anything to add?
Can it go to twenty-three and a half? At what point would it be the five feet?
Just a few feet.
We'll ask them.
Vinnie, you gotta give us the number, what are you thinking of?
Okay, I have trouble hearing you because there's an echo. Yeah, okay. What did you say?
What dimension are you thinking of when you're, when you indicated that you would be in favor? What dimension to that rear dimension, it's currently it's 4.18 feet?
Well, I know through the past, we've given, we've gone as, we've gone a maximum of five feet off in an IU, an IU district. And people always cooperated to get that at least minimum. If I, I understand that he's got a truck, I understand he's got a truck that's more than twenty-two feet. And, but I'm just saying, he can move it forward. He could make it twenty-three. As long as, in my mind, as long as he stays with something we've been doing for years in the IU, just that we wouldn't go below five foot.
Well, the other thing that I think we need to note for the record, and again, members can do whatever it is they use, there is no such rule. You know, you can't reference a rule that doesn't exist. There is no such rule that says...
He said there's no such rule.
We have the setback, which is what it is.
What the rule was, we had a rule amongst ourselves in zoning during a certain period of time, what we would accept as a, as a percentage off the side lots on IU districts.
I understand that. That may have been your unofficial rule.
I'm still using that, I'm still using that in my mind as to what I would do. And if people want to go along with it, that's their prerogative.
Yeah, I respect that, but that's not a, that's not a legal matter for that this board can interpret. We can't say that our opinion is, we can, we can grant up to five feet. Because if we do that, that's just, that may have been what you did, and I can understand it if you did it, but we certainly can't use that as a premise. If members want to say that five feet is acceptable, then they can say it. But I'm certainly not going to go on the record and say that our unofficial attitudes, that anything close to that, anything five feet or more is acceptable. But I understand what your point is. So it seems to me that Vinnie would be in favor of five feet plus. So it really comes down to what other members want or don't want to do with regard to this matter, and, you know, what seems to be kind of silly here is, it would seem to be silly, I would rather continue the meeting and have you go back and measure your truck and measure your garage. And come back to us and say, twenty-two feet, twenty-two foot six, what will work? As opposed to us saying to you, Mr. Boyle, we will grant you twenty-three. And then you sit down with your builder and your builder says, it won't work. And so all we did was make you feel good to frustrate you in three months. So what is the better here? For you to go back, measure your truck, drive it into your existing garage, do whatever you want to do to come back to us, you already know that the majority vote was against what you had. I'm sure the solicitor will agree that we, I let him tell me, but if we decided that we wanted to continue this again, we're not trying to frustrate you, we're trying to work. If you agree to then go back, do whatever math you want to do to determine what is the maximum depth of this garage. And the other thing I would ask you is, what's the maximum width? Because that will impact you as well. I understand the width of the truck, but I also understand that if you were able to cut an opening with a lintel, you know, a beam, such that you could open the door on your vehicle when you pulled in on the driver's side, because that wall would not be there in its entirety. You could make an interior garage door, if you will, a framed opening, that would allow you to possibly reduce the fourteen to thirteen. So if you reduce it to thirteen and you pull it forward six to eight inches, you have nothing to lose by coming back to us and saying, this is the best I can do. You throw yourself on the mercy of the board and we either say, we've exhausted everything, we've done the best we could, we either agree with you or we don't. To me, that appears to be the most reasonable approach. Would you be, if you speak, you have to so keep in here. Come forward to my... So you would be in agreement with that? If we were, I'll check with the solicitor to make sure we're legal, I'm sure we are, but if you don't help in turn. If we were to continue this to the next date available... If we were to continue this to the next date available, and you come back to us, you do however you want to do it, you come back to us, and you confirm the fourteen and the twenty-four, and you change both of those dimensions to the least that will work, whether it's by cutting an opening into your other garage, which I think you would want to do anyway.
Yes.
So that they would connect. So if you situated it where the door typically opens, then that may allow you to come to the left towards the house six to eight inches. Anything we pick up here is at least you showing your goodwill to try to work with us, to say, I'm doing everything I can, and it, it may make it easier for us to jump over the hurdles that you, I think you respect, there are promises. We're trying to do what's right for every member of the community, not just you. So, I understand that you would be willing to continue, who are date certain, willing to be on it tonight.
So, all we're doing now, we're complaining about four inches?
Well, you can look at it that way, or you can look at it that we're trying to do everything we can to respect the law, which is that you're in violation of it already, and you're asking to be in violation even more. And our job is to pull back on the reins and say, you know, to work with us. So yeah, you can reduce it, and say, this is silly, this is asinine. You know, give me a high five about eight inches in one direction and, and seven in the other. I can't change that if that's your thought. But if you look at it from a more productive and positive, you're trying to work with us, because remember, you are asking for relief. You're asking us to grant you permission. So it's not unheard of that we have the right to look to you and say, you gotta work with us. What you're asking for is pretty significant. You know, the rule says twenty, and you want to take fifteen. By any reasonable standard, that's a significant amount that you're asking for. So all we're doing is saying, you go back and make sure that these two dimensions, if they can change, it's obvious to you that it would make it, I can guarantee you anything. The three members who voted against it, myself included, I'm not gonna tell you, otherwise I would come out and say, no, I'm not changing my mind, don't waste your time. I have respect to you and membership, I'm giving you the opportunity. You can walk away now and say, no, and the answer is, we voted no. Uh, or you can say, okay, Mr. Inspector, Mr. Zoning Official, let's book it to the next available meeting, and I will work with my builder or to them, and find out if you can reduce the two dimensions, and come back to us with a, with an updated plan prior to the meeting, so we can afford it, just like you did with those pictures. You can just mark this up with a pen and say, I'm gonna change this to this and this to that. Send it to Mr. Anderson, he will get it to us. And there are no promises, but at least it's another effort to try to appease us and to give you what you want. Okay, does that make sense?
No, Mr. Chairman, if I may, there, there is one alternative. We could put it to five feet, and it seems like Vinnie would change his vote to yes, and then the yeses would have it.
No, that would be three to, three to three. Uh, you'd have three no and two yes, so it would be three to two. Yeah, you still need four votes for it to pass in either direction, so. And again, my point all along was, it does us no good to give this man, this applicant relief if the relief is not viable.
How did it pass in the first place if it was three to two?
No, there's three no, two in favor. Yeah, three, two in favor, three against.
There was three yes.
There was two in favor, three against, and a flat vote. And there's no question about what the vote was. There was three no's and two yeses, so there's no question about what the vote was. The issue here is, you need four, four emotions to pass. Uh, so I don't want to get into the, the rules are the rules, they're not changing. Uh, and the point is, the only point I made was, why are we going to say to him five feet? In fact, what he in fact did. And then he comes back and meets with his builder, and he says, oh, thank you, but I can't do that. I would rather give him the opportunity to find out what he can do, and come back to us and say either, no, sorry, you either grant me this, or I just do that.
So I could go, actually, I could go thirteen-six instead of fourteen.
If you tell us you can do that, then tell us you can do it. Yeah, but that doesn't change the depth, so you need to look at both. I mean, if you can say, what, I, you know, I don't want us to try to do the math here, but thirteen-six, of course, would, would add a foot to the four-point-eight-one. So that would become five-point-eight-one. And the only other thing that would help is if we can reduce the twenty-four. So, if, you know, I still think it would be worth your time to come back. And I can, even if you grant us the relief, can I kind of start building it until April or May anyway, right? So, you're going on record as saying you can go with thirteen-six or thirteen?
I can go thirteen-six.
Well, why don't you check and see if thirteen is available as well?
No, I can go, no, I can go twenty-three. But I don't think the truck will fit there.
Well, that's why I put with it. We don't want you to give, we don't want to give you the relief, so you can be frustrated. I'd be rather you go back and find out what will work, which, and then if you say, oh, this is what I have to have, then we either say yes or no. But it'll be over. There won't be a question of, well, you know, okay, to give me this extent, because I would have been able to do it. We're putting the burden on you to come back to us and say, if you grant me this relief, it will work, and then we can either say yea or nay. Is that fair?
No.
So, um, what we should then, uh, for the solicitor, Mr. Grealish, can you just, at this point, because there is no motion on the floor, we can have a motion to continue, do you agree?
Hey, great. Uh, and Mr. Mr. Chairman, the, I assume that the, the public hearing was closed at the end of last meeting? Or was it open this meeting as well?
I don't believe I ever closed it. I mean, we, we closed the public hearing, and we never reopened the meeting for the public to speak.
Right, when did you close it? This meeting or last meeting?
Oh, we continued. You mean, did we continue it from the first meeting?
Right.
Yes, it wasn't, this was a continuance from the first meeting, so all we would do is continue it again.
Exactly, continue it to a date certain for, you know, and you'll be fine.
Yeah, before we take a motion, Gary, is there, just for the zoning official in there?
Yes, I'm here.
Uh, what, what would work, since we're going with three-one, three-one was gonna be what? We, was gonna just be elections, and then it's, and, uh, the approval of that decision, right?
Three-one was basically to, uh, clean up a decision and get our house in order. Um, however, if you want to go to three-eight, that is the reg- regularly scheduled date for the zoning board meeting.
But you, so we, but we have another dimensional variance, but this the variance of, of this, this applicant here would be a pretty very quick, a five or ten-minute circumstance. So, you're suggesting that we move everything to three-eight?
Yes, I, yeah, that is my suggestion, yeah.
All right. Sorry, I'm. Yep, yeah, but I, we can't, we can't, just because you're missing a step, we can't. I have no problem if we want to keep it to three-one, I mean, uh, and then still have a meeting on three-eight, if you want to give us their pestrelle, the opportunity, he's gonna be out of town, but I, I have no issue with it. If we want a, I'll expect a meeting on three-one, we have every right to do that. Do you agree, Mr. Grealish, that if we wanted to still have a meeting on three-one, we have every right to?
You could, you could continue this meeting to any date certain, and my advice would be, whenever the full board will be available.
Yeah, okay. I get you. So out of respect to Mr. Pescarella, since he was very much engaged in this application, uh, if three-one works for you?
Yes.
So, I would ask for a motion that we continue the application of Mr. Boyle to a date certain of three-one. Uh, Mr. Anderson will fill in the agenda accordingly, and just make it work with whatever applications we need at that time. But this application would be continued in three-one, if a member would like to make a motion. If you do, at least we should state in the motion that the applicant is going to revisit both dimensions, proposed dimensions, and come back with us to, with the minimum that, that, uh, that he can live with, so that it's understood. I think we all understand why we're doing this and why you're gonna come back to us. Okay, so if a member would like to make a motion to continue.
I make a motion to continue this hearing to three-one.
We have a second.
I'll second.
Well, we, we know that we're continuing application number, uh, ZBR twenty-two oh one, uh, application of Wayne Doyle to a date certain of three-one twenty-four. Well, we can indicate that, uh, applicant is, is going to come back to the board with revised width and length dimensions for the proposed garage. Agreed? Oh, do we need to read it again? We're good. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Close. Vinnie, did you chime in on that one?
Yes.
Yes.
You're in favor?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Um, excuse me, who seconded that?
Uh, who did we give the second to? Um, Gail, then I'll be.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that done, uh, we can have a motion to withdraw. Second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Uh, we'll see you again, uh, off the record, on the record. Just get that to us a week ahead of time, so members can. Thank you. I know we appreciate, you know, we're trying to do a little.